We call our school board meeting to order. We welcome everyone who's here with us tonight. Glad to see so many. On our agenda, we need a motion to approve this agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, Bruce.
Motion by Bruce. Do I hear a second?
A second, Janice.
Second by Janice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C, approve the minutes of the regular call board meeting held on January 18th, 2022. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, Louie.
Motion by Louie. Do I hear a second? By Ricky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving along to item D, department and superintendent reports. We'll move to B, approve bills, salaries, and wages. We've had a chance to look those over in our board folders. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion, Bruce.
Motion by Bruce. Do I hear a second?
A second, Janice Shepherd.
By Janice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Approve the treasurer's report. That's also in our board folder. You've had an opportunity to look it over. Is there any questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the treasurer's report?
Motion.
Motion by Louie. Do I hear a second? By Ricky. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. In the folder, the superintendent had a few expenses. If you've had a chance to look that over. Do I hear a motion to approve those?
Motion, Bruce.
Motion by Bruce. Do I hear a second?
Second, Louie.
Second by Louie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving along to the fun part of the program. Item E, showcase and recognitions. And I'll turn the time over to Mr. McCully.
Yep. Now I'm actually gonna get Jennifer to help me out here and bring in, we've got several to recognize.
So, I had several students at my school this past week stand up for another student who was new to the school, having a little bit of a difficult time getting into classes and getting adjusted. And there was some teasing going on. And these four students stood up immediately. They stood up to their peers and told them, no, you can't do that. That is not right. That's not how we treat people. And I'm just so proud of them because this is a student who was not able to do that for themselves. So, I've got two of those students that are here, Chase Williams and Cece Ramirez-Balbano. The other two students I do want to recognize, even though they're not here, and those, they were Lola Jones and Audrey Bonbals. So, the next person that I want to recognize is Ms. Daphne Darkamensa. She is our school counselor, and she is a hot man. At any point in time, if you're walking down our halls, she has students that are knocking on her door trying to see her. They come running down the hall in between breaks. If they have even a minute's worth of time, they're trying to see her at any point in time during the day. She makes herself available to them. She has a Google form set up. So, that if they are really struggling with something and they need to talk to her, all they have to do is fill out that Google form and send her a message immediately. And then as soon as she is able to grab those students and meet with them, she does so. If you ask any of our kids who Ms. Darkamensa is, they all know. She is in the cafeteria every single morning greeting students when they come to school. She steps up and does cafeteria duty or any other duty that I need her to do. She has stepped in classes before. She has watched students in the hallway. She just goes above and beyond and does anything and everything that she can to help. And so, with it being a school counselor week, last week, I just wanted to make sure that she was recognized here as well. Oh, Lola. Well, she still needs the... So, what Lola was recognized for was, we had a new student that came to school to a singing T. And she stood up to her peers and told them that that was not cool, that they can't do that, and that they shouldn't do that. So, that's what she's been through. Thank you so much. All right. So, we have several students and staff members to recognize this evening. And so, one of the offhand things that's been going on is here at elementary. One of our kiddos is getting recognized for two different things tonight. So, we'll get started. First person I want to bring up is Ms. Amanda McMahon. Amanda's on up here. Ms. Amanda probably does not enjoy getting recognized in front of all these people. But I just wanna say, Ms. Amanda has anything special, special activity, anything going on that is an opportunity for kids that I may not be able to plug in just as easily in a regular classroom. Ms. Amanda will take that on through library. And she does a wonderful, wonderful job of working with our students. She, if you all are familiar with the Dia de los Muertos celebration, Ms. Amanda works on that for our students. She worked on the conservation contest for our students. And we'll be recognizing some students tonight. And currently, she is working hard on helping us out to get ready for a really nice celebration for Garrett Morgan Day. And so, Ms. Amanda does anything I ask her, even if I say, you're probably not gonna love me for this, but anyhow, she is always so lenient. And I'm just so appreciative of her. So, thank you, Ms. Amanda. I'm gonna recognize you with that. And I'm gonna have her stay up here, which I know she loves. And she is gonna help me recognize the students that were our top three from our conservation contest at our school. And I'll send those art entries so you all can see them because they're really awesome. Ariana Morris. Ms. Bailey Klein. And then Kami Nichols could not be here tonight. But these folks have some additional prizes coming from the local conservation district. And they just did a wonderful job. And out of our whole school, they had the top three entries. So, we're really excited about that. So, congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you, Ms. Amanda. And then we also wanna recognize our academic team. I feel like everybody should know by now, but man, we had an awesome weekend for our parents elementary academic team. And so, academic team, folks, come on up if you're here. If you're here for academic team. We have a, we have actually very large academic team this year. And quite a few of our students could not make it. However, the folks that are here represent a lot of different achievements that we have. So, let me talk a little bit from memory. And then I'm gonna have to pull my phone up because there were a lot of different awards that these folks won. So, our school, probably the most proud moment I had was our school was awarded the Hume Sportsmanship Award. And so, we were voted on by all of our peers. Our kids were the first to clean up chairs, the first to shake hands, the first to just be kind and extend kindness. So, I was really proud of them for that. They also were second place in the quick recall where we're buzzing in with those quick answers. They were so impressive. They defeated Saint Mary and Cambridge in the meet. And so, they did a wonderful job there. I'm sorry. I thought somebody said something. They also, Hayden is not here. He placed third in science. We had a fifth place and second place in social studies. Chloe was fifth. And Cash, who's here tonight, placed second in social studies. So, congratulations, Cash. Jorge was third place in language arts. In arts and humanities, Alex, where's Alex? There you are. Alex placed fifth. We cleaned up in arts and humanities. Emma Morris placed second. And then Eleanor placed first in arts and humanities. In written assessment, Leila placed second. Second place in written assessment. And then overall, Carter here is yours. And Bailey, Carter and Bailey were both on the quick recall teams. Or no, you didn't test. Bailey's on quick recall. And overall, for the whole district, we placed second. So, lots of us will be advancing to the region. And that's on March 5th. And it's been quite a bit since we've done that. So, we're really excited about all the accomplishments of our team. We could not do it without our coaches. Ms. Barnes, where are you at? Come on up here, Ms. Barnes. And Ms. Barnes, where are you at? Ms. Barnes helps with everything. And then Ms. Arva wasn't able to be here tonight. And so, guys, let's, they've done an awesome job. I just wanna give them a big round of applause.
Is that it?
That's it.
For you now?
Yeah.
Thank you. That was awesome. Moving along to item F, public comment. We had Mr. Terry Dunford sign in to speak to the board tonight. Terry?
Hello. Good evening. How y'all doing? My name is Terry Dunford. I am the president of our local chapter of the NAACP. I'm also the founder of a nonprofit for youth in the community called the Voyage Movement. Some of you guys are not aware of that organization. We have a, we have a multipurpose center right over the hill. I think today we had like 58 middle and high school students visited the center today. So, I kinda confused around about how many students visit on average, probably about 30 students a day, right? That come from parents high middle over to the center. But I'm speaking today on behalf of the NAACP. Recently, as some of you may know, I don't know if all of you know, but there was a public, and I don't know if this is the form, if you guys wanna address this at a different matter. But you guys can correct me if you want, and we can schedule a time to address what I'm getting ready to say. We had a public, well, incident that was made public. Let's just say that. And it involved one of the middle school students, I mean teachers. And it literally spoke to, from the NAACP's investigation, her behavior inside the class. And some of the comments that were made. Once I talked to some of the administration, it was reported that it may not have been as it was reported, so to speak. You know, some of the things may not have been said. And the issue with this is, there's a lot of things that can't be addressed because of lack of transparency. And then, things being found legally. You know, you can't speak about whether or not she was reprimanded, whether or not, you know, certain things were put in place, which is really hard to address when you're trying to get to the root of a situation. But then there's layers to protect a teacher. But what are we doing to protect these students who may or may not have been a victim to what was alleged? Now, if y'all don't know what was alleged, then I'll let you know. What was alleged? And is this appropriate to be spoken right now? Can I? All right. So, what was alleged was the teacher, a math teacher spoke about the George Floyd case in class. We in math class, we talking about, I guess, a social issue of what could be considered a history issue. And what was reported to me, and I get these kids at the center all the time. Like I just told you, 30 to 50 come every day. So, once I heard this, this is what some of the students told me, that she did say that George Floyd deserved to die. She pulled up his criminal history and called him a thug and different things, right? And the issue with that is, the investigation is not transparent as to how it was conducted. And then, the end result is, you take a person like this, you remove them, but then you place them. When you ask me to send my child to preschool. You see what I'm saying? And my child don't go to preschool. I'm glad that she doesn't right now. But what I'm saying is, we have to have, or we have to establish some sense of transparency. And then we have to look at the culture of what have we created? And then one of my questions is, when the teacher was removed, was there any conversation with the students about why she was removed and the wrong? If there was any, clearly it was something done to have her removed because she was completely exonerated. She would've stayed in class. Like, are we, what are we doing after the fact? Are we just exposing these kids to another teacher without speaking to the issues? Because when we send our kids to the school, we saying that you respect your teachers as you're gonna respect me. But we also have to teach them now that you have to respect your teachers to a fault. Because if your teacher disrespects you in this type of setting, then where's the line? And I know it's difficult, and I know you guys have the hardest job. Trust me. I go to a lot of schools. And I'm in there for hours too. And I'm like, how do they do it every day? So, I'm not saying that the job is not hard, but we still have to do it. We signing up for this job. But my question is, for the board, administration, what are we doing when it relates to diversity training? What are we doing as it relates to protecting these kids when they're exposed to these type of things? Whether it's minimal or the maximal of this situation? Because even at its minimal, if you saying, okay, she didn't do this, but she did that, what are we doing to ensure these kids that for one, we're not saying that this is acceptable? For two, you do have a right to support this. And if you do, you're gonna be supported when you support it though. I mean, when you do report it. You know, and those are the questions that I have. And these are the challenges that we have as a community. But I'm speaking on behalf of a lot of the community right now because I'm one of the individuals who get all the calls, just like Mr. McCully does. I might get them before he does. But this is the challenge that I put before you. Like, you can sit there, you can make, it may not mean nothing to you, but it does to this community. It does. I have a lot of family to go to the school. I'm a graduate of this school. And if we're going to deal with diversity of a culture with diverse students, we have to be able to navigate these waters. Because it's not a one size fit all. And then, when we tell the students, okay, an adult can make a mistake that should cost them their job, but we're just gonna move them over here. But when we recommend them, and when they make mistakes, they get detention, they get expulsion, they get suspensions. So, we showing them that, you know, we are in the world, it's not fair. But it has to be some sense of accountability. And then it has to also be, you know, some sense of balance. So, my question is this. And I know this is protected by law. What was done prior to this, you know, to stop this from happening? Because this could've been preventable based on what I'm hearing from parents, right? And then what are we doing? What have we learned from this? And what are we gonna do moving forward when we see something like this or the potential for something like this from happening again? You know? So, floor is yours. And I know it's a lot, but I mean, these things, you know, they have to be addressed. Because the culture here, it seems great on the outside, but when we pull back the layers, it's a lot that we need to deal with and address. And if no one's gonna address them, you know, I'll be here at the board meeting, I mean, until you get tired of seeing them.
Now, I'll reject that. I'll reach back out and follow up with you on this. But in a public forum meeting like this, the board legally can't respond, if you will. But I can definitely reach back out to you as far as it concerns you, and we'll do so this week.
Okay. Can the board address what we can do as a culture to create culture? Can you address any of what are presented?
I think anytime we get into personnel matters, it's just, it's pretty tight on that end about what can be communicated. I think we can set up another time that we can absolutely, we wanna talk about ways that we can be better. And I think I'm happy to open that door at another setting for sure.
Thank you, Terry. And, real fast, we have another student. He did make it. So, I'm gonna let Ms. Harmon recognize the entry real fast before we move on. Everybody else has already heard this, but for Dan, we had a new student that enrolled this past week who was giving teeth. And your daughter was one of three out of her four total that stood up to her peers to tell them, no, you can't do that. That's not right. You can't do it that way. So, that's what she's been through.
Yeah, I'll do it again.
Moving along to Jane's presentations.
Yes. For this is our, and Jane Mary is board member recognition match. And we ended up having a Zoom meeting and no one was in person. So, we kinda wanted to hold off until this month so that we could be in person to appreciate you all for all that you do for us. And I know I personally enjoy working with you all and keeping you straight, trying to. But you all do a lot. And I know you get lots of phone calls and you help us to make our schools better. So, these are, in the back, the elementary school made a big poster with everybody's signature on it. And Dr. Pickle had the smart idea, I was like, they're gonna fight over it. So, she took a picture and hung each frame with you all. And then we had several students and staff write notes of appreciation. And those are in those envelopes. And then also, we have the KSBA certificate of appreciation for you all as well to have. So, do you all wanna do a group picture? You wanna wait till the end? We'll do it at the end. So, we just wanted to say thank you. And I hope you get a cupcake and cookie and...
Yep. And we thank you, Jennifer. I'm, Jennifer and I, you brought your two main points in contact here. So, I'm deeply grateful that you guys have entrusted me with this position. And I'm grateful for the team that we've built and continue to build. I was excited about the future as I ever have been. I think we've got a fun three, five, seven years in front of us. That, just a lot's happening. So, I couldn't ask for a better board. And I wish you could've done this last month, but I'm glad you're here this month. Go ahead, Joe. So, this is the banner for KSBA that our middle and high school art club kid did. The team is connecting the dots. So, you can see there. Very cool. We'll be hanging that up here. They're doing it, I think, digitally this year. Everyone's looking at it. So, you can check that out. And then I think Whitney put together some kids wanna tell you guys thank you as well. So, I'll turn it over to Whitney now.
Okay. We will, under Jane, we got John Roberts, Roberts Insurance. Talk to us.
Thank you all for, is it okay if I just stay in here?
Thank you all for allowing me to come back. It's good to see you all in person. Probably see you all in Louisville next week at the superintendents conference. But my name is John Roberts. We handle your all student accident insurance. Our agency is out of Richmond, Kentucky. We provide covers for all school sponsors, school supervised activities. And actually, something that you all do is very nice is that you cover all students, not just your athletes. And when I look at the data from your all's loss history, 80% of your claims are athletic related. But then there's 20% of your claims that are recess, P D, field trips, things like that. And so, a great thing about this plan, you're not required to purchase any additional coverage. So, we're gonna cover for any school sponsor, school supervised, all the way up to $7.5 million, which the KHSA provides a catastrophic policy up to $7.5. Well, we, but they only cover sanctioned events. So, anything, weightlifting, anything outside of the sanctioned time of the KHSA, that's when your policy will step up and pay. And it matches the KHSA so there's not any gaps or any gray areas that could be found in the policy. But every year, we take your account to the market to see if we can find any sort of better coverage, better prices, see if there's anything else out there. And so, this year, we received pricing from Zurich Insurance, which is a renewal access, as well as Hartford. And very pleased that the renewal is actually flat from expiring, which anything tied to healthcare, we're not seeing too many flat renewals. So, the price is $48,392.80, which provides covers. It's identical covers to what you had last year. Claims continue to be paid by K and K Insurance. Of course, if anything comes up, you can always reach me or contact my office. But very pleased that we're able to offer a... But very pleased that we're able to offer a flyer renewal this year.
They've always just been great communicators and very quick to respond with any concern of that, so I'm grateful for what you guys do for us.
Thank you.
Yes.
If you ever need me, just let me know.
Thank you so much. Okay. Okay, can you turn the time over to Kathy Tobin? With our family resource, youth resources?
Am I okay to take this off?
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Kathy Tobin, and I'm your family resource and youth service center coordinator for the district. And I'm here today to present the first grant for the twenty-two, twenty-three school years. As of now, the budget has not been provided to us by the state. But last year, we received over eighty-two thousand dollars, and we've been told that the preliminary budget reflects an increase in that amount for this year. So, we're very excited about that news. I would like to offer a shout out to Jennifer Graves, who helped me prepare the nice document that we will see on the screen shortly. And I just want to take a few moments to highlight a, a few things from that document. First, our holiday assistance program was coordinated by our assistant fris coordinator, Nikki Mullins. And she was able to serve over a hundred and seventy-five children for the, um, holiday assistance. Um, another program that Ms. Mullins does is our socktober campaign. This is a program that allows us to work with community agencies to collect socks for students in need in both Paris and Bourbon County schools. This year, we collected six hundred and eighty-one pair of socks, which I do believe is a record. So, a big thank you to Nikki for her work on those programs, and of course, a big thank you to our community for supporting our programs. We've also added a few new programs, uh, Cooking with Suzanne, which was an after-school opportunity for middle school students, and a Random Act of Kindness campaign that we've just started. I would also like to take a moment and, um, highlight the item at the very bottom of the page. Mr. Munoz and Perez partnered to provide a family college visit for our ESL families. This program was one out of nine programs selected across our region to be presented to the state legislators at the next legislative session. So, I would like to thank Mr. Munoz for his partnership on this wonderful program. Thank you for allowing me to serve as your fris coordinator. Do you have any questions?
You're doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we turn the time over now to Whitney, we will work on our new, our signs.
So, I'm just going to talk about our two new early D signs, which we finally have full control, full working control of as of this morning, I think. Um, I'm really excited about these, I think we have a lot of opportunity and really cool things that we could do with these in the future. Um, I just wanted to share that there's a picture of the elementary and the high school, and then if you'll click on that picture, there's a link to the website. I've made a page on the website that will allow people to submit content to go on these signs. Um, we're limiting that content to being directly related to our students. But for example, if we had a group of high school students that was in an art show downtown on Saturday, um, someone could submit that content through that form, and we would upload it, and it would be on that sign, um, the week prior. Um, so I think there's just a lot of really cool things that we can do with these signs. I think on the elementary sign, we're going to do some stuff with kids' birthdays and just recognizing the positive things that are happening at our schools. And that's really all, there's a lot of, a lot of information on the website page about the signs, but, um, all in all, I just think it's going to be a really, really cool thing for us to have here.
Thank you, Whitney. The sounds are wonderful.
Thank you.
Moving along, we'll, um, H, our consent agenda. We've got several items here. The first one is consider a motion to approve headlight procedure. B, consider a motion to approve policy for student health information form, uh, emergency release form. C, consider a motion for Paris Elementary to raise funds for Children's Miracle Network. Prior approval from Mr. McCully. D, consider a motion for esports to have the following fundraisers. Calendar date sales, trash pickups, and contact local businesses. And E, consider a motion to authorize superintendent to utilize remote learning days when needed, Senate Bill twenty-five. Is there any questions about any of those items on the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Motion by Bruce.
Motion by Bruce, do I hear a second?
Second, Louie.
Second by Louie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. All business tonight, consider a motion to approve updated personnel leave zero three point one two three one, second reading. Mr. McCully.
That's just, it's in the board folder, it's a second reading of updated form, that we moved some things around to make more sense, so it's not a huge change there.
Okay. So, do I hear a motion to can, uh, to approve this updated personnel leave?
I do, Janice.
Motion by Janice, do I hear a second?
Second, Ricky.
Second by Ricky, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Uh, moving along to new business, consider a motion to approve F R Y S C grant. Which Kathy just talked about.
Motion.
Motion by?
Ricky.
By Ricky, do I hear a second?
Second, Louie.
Second by Bruce, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving along, item B, consider a motion to approve local planning committee minutes.
So, the local planning committee met a couple of weeks ago to, to add the preschool new building to the facility plan. That's, we met for about ten minutes and we were able to add it, so it's just definitely towards moving forward.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the local planning committee minutes?
Motion.
Motion by Bruce, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Ricky, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Item D, consider a motion to approve student insurance agreement with Roberts. Always skip C, my bad. Consider a motion to approve updated district facility plan.
Motion.
Motion by Bruce?
Aye, Janice.
Janice, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, item D, consider a motion to approve student insurance agreement with Roberts Insurance for the twenty, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three school year. Mr. Roberts had just spoke about it, do I hear? Bruce makes a motion, do I hear a second?
Second, Louie.
Second by Louie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item E, consider a motion to approve updated twenty, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-two salary schedule district health coordinator.
So, currently, that's a fifteen hundred dollar stipend for the district health coordinator. That's typically a nurse that we have hired. Uh, what we'd like to do is change that from, the nurse, nurse typically makes twenty-six fifty an hour, which is a flat rate for nurses. Uh, that, that wage has gone up dramatically and we've had some turnover in the position. So, what we're proposing is making the district health coordinator be a nurse that also has district health coordinator, coordinator responsibilities and bump that pay up to thirty dollars an hour instead of twenty-six fifty, so that's, that's a change.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve this updated salary schedule?
Motion, Bruce.
Motion by Bruce, do I hear a second? Second by Janice, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item F, consider a motion to approve shortened school day for Paris High School student with R A D P.
So, there's a small little, uh, paragraph in your board folder that just references, this is a child, a student that, uh, is coming off of a home hospital, home, home, uh, home hospital care. And the recommendation is that rather than coming back for full days, they do a two-week transition at, uh, at half-days, and then, then return to full-day attendance at the end of the month. So, it's recommended by A R C with, for student identity.
Okay.
Just needs board approval.
Motion by Bruce?
Motion by Bruce, do I hear a second?
Second.
By? Was it Ricky? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. G, consider a motion to approve March staffing allocations.
That's in your board folder as well. This is the first round of staffing allocations, meaning it's the bare bones. We went over it with principals today, it's basically takes, you have so many freshmen anticipated next year, you divide it by the formula that's set by board policy and state policy, and they get one point eight teachers. And you, you add all those up, and we're allocating those. So, in the, in your folder, it's a very bare bones, it's, it's several positions down from where we are currently, but that's just because we, we come to this point and work our way back up. Uh, we know we added, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in staffing this year to help with learning loss and get class sizes small and support. Uh, we're not going to be able to maintain that forever, so this, this is where we'll start building from here. That, that next round of allocation will be, uh, by, by May.
I, I got a question about the formula.
Yes.
So, when you, when you look at the formula and it has like one point eight, of course, you go ahead and bump that up to two, right?
Well, you bump up the total for the school, so if you look, I know the allocation is kind of saved, it's small, but like if it's one point eight and two point two, that averages out to, or that adds up to four. So, you take, for the high school, you take all four years, four grade levels, add it up, and if it's six point eight, we can then round that up to seven.
Okay.
Yep.
So, do I hear a motion to approve the March staffing allocations?
Motion, Louie.
Motion by Louie?
Second, Ricky.
Second by Ricky, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Move along now to superintendent's report, and I'll turn the time over to Mr. McCully.
Cool, uh, a couple of quick things, and I'll see if you guys have questions. I'm going to stand up just because I've been sitting all day for some time. So, first one is, I wanted to just briefly run an idea about you guys as far as branding. Uh, we, we want to continue, Whitney's done a really good job of making sure the content we put out has a uniform fonts, and, you know, we use the same logos, and we're really tightening that up, and even created a, a new logo, uh, with the modern grayhound, kind of like all the new colleges and schools are doing, so we, we've done that. Uh, one of the things I want to run by you guys, and I don't know if we touched on this before or not, and don't need, we don't need to get into it tonight, but talking about shifting some of our branding towards Paris City Schools instead of Paris Independent Schools. Uh, and I'll tell you my rationale behind that, is I think a number of people in the, that moved to Bourbon County, or people that are in, even in Bourbon County, you could say, is that a private school? Do I have to pay to go there? Versus if, I think if you say, we're Paris City Schools, you think if I live in the city, I, I might go there. And it's just one of those things to help clear up any misconceptions. I don't see it as a big shift, and I really just want to plant that seed today, if not really action taken on that, but I'd love to hear your own thoughts about what that, what that transition might look like. Our tax bill still says Paris City Schools, I, it's not, it wouldn't be a huge rebranding, uh, but we would look at using that as something that really signifies if you're in the city, you go to Paris City Schools, and, and, and I think, like I said, if some, with, with the new open borders, I'm going to touch on in a minute, it, it might be a way that we can draw some people that are in the city that don't even realize that this is where they should be going to school, or could be going to school. Uh, I don't know if you all have thoughts on that now, I'm happy to entertain those, or we can, we can talk and revisit, but.
It, to me, has always been, since, yeah, it's always been, been kind of a shame, so.
Yeah, and I think we can, I mean, we're still an independent district, we keep a lot of that branding, but I think adding this layer to it might be a good move.
Any questions about that?
I don't remember us getting called Paris Independent when I was in school.
I don't think. We were always Paris City Schools.
I think it just morphed somewhere over the years to.
It got thrown in there.
I don't know how, but I think bringing that back into the equation might be a, a good thing. I mean, I don't know about total rebranding, I like a lot of stuff that we put up that's Paris Independent, but I think tying that city name to, uh, to say, like, we want to be a community school, and when people think of it, you're in the city, you're, you're part of us. So, well, if that's, if you're all good with it, we'll, we'll play around a little bit more with maybe bring any ideas for next month, so.
I have a question. What do other, do other counties that have both city and a county school, do most of them go by?
Yeah, that's where the idea came from. So, the, the districts that are really growing and thriving, it, it may just be coincidence, but like Barks Town, Bowling Green, the ones that are just really booming, all go by city school. Barks, Barks Town is, that's, that's where I got the idea literally, was Barks Town Superintendent has a land year that says Barks Town City School, and I was like, why didn't I think of that? Uh, so, it's, um, we'll, we'll explore it and talk, talk more, but I think it might be a good.
I always thought it was Paris City Schools.
And it, it really is, it really hasn't, it really hasn't been taken away from it, but we've made a pretty strong push towards Paris Independent with some of our branding and stuff. So, rather than continuing on that path with that push, you know, maybe we look at adding this as another level to get it up. Because I, because it's very much Paris Independent now, like that's.
The only, the only time I remember when I was in school being at Paris Independent was on the side of the school bus.
Yeah.
That's true.
That's a good time.
Yeah. I don't know, there's, there's something about, we, we can talk about K F P A, so it's not crucial for you, but, um, go ahead, move on.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, next is the marquee and sign protocol, and Whitney already touched on that a little bit, but I think for all intents and purposes, I really want, you know, we've, I've talked with Angie quite a bit about this, I want it to be the community school, and let people put different outfits on there and whatnot, but I think it just gets really messy when we tell somebody they can do something, this one can't do, and I think it's just going to be best for us to have a pretty tight policy, like she said, that ties directly to our schools, our students, our staff, uh, and promoting that. And then, you know, if we have an anomaly here or there, and we can't figure out a way to tie it to our kids that we really, really want to do, we can revisit that, but I think it would be wise for us to just keep that pretty tight protocol for, it's got to be directly related to school.
So, what if, like, for instance, like we have the, we have the fair and stuff like that, community events like that, especially on, at the elementary, would that, would we be open for that, and how would that?
I think the way we do that, that's a good question, is if we've got kids participating in the fair, or doing something with the fair, or it's, we really want our kids to do, to be a part of the fair, I think that's something we could probably work in. Uh, if it's just a, you know, I had someone reach out the other day that just wanted to recognize a, a person that was retired, and it was, they're, they're alumni from here, and I was like, that sounds great, but on the end, it has no direct connection to our current students, or staff, or schools. So, it was, I think that's why we need a protocol, it just says, if we can't tie it back to our students, staff, school, then, you know, can't. So, we just have, that, that'd just be more reason for people to partner with us. You want to get up on the marquee, you got to partner with us, and get our kids involved with it.
You all have any thoughts on that?
What about a, uh, like, uh, class reunions? Would you consider that?
This is great, I love this.
I think a class reunion should be.
No, uh, I think that might be something that we need to, to, to think through, uh, outward.
I mean, because I'm, I'm thinking about the, the meeting we had about the, the sports thing, and incorporating classroom reunions with sports reunions.
Yeah, we've got a strong alumni, and, and we do partner with the Education Foundation, and very high one. We need to, that's just another one of those that we've got to really come up with something that's pretty tight, so that we're fair across the board, so.
Because we're doing R fifty this year.
Yeah. Okay, uh.
I think if it's tied into the school alumni.
Totally, so, we, I think that's a good question. And, and if more of those scenarios come up, let me know, because that way we can have it.
Well, I'm just saying, because you're probably going to have one about every year for next.
True.
I don't think that's a big deal, I think the big deal is where we just open it up to something that's completely not school-related. Hey, I've got a house for sale, and.
I like Janice.
Yeah, yeah, so, I, yeah, I think, I think if it's tied to school, the, the fault, I want to say yes, we just got to keep it going, so.
Okay.
Well, that's another, another, what if somebody wants to sponsor these, uh, the marquee itself?
Oh, like put something on the?
They're like, hey, here's fifty thousand dollars, put.
They got fifty thousand dollars, we can make something. Yes, I agree, I think if we get to that point where, I mean, like Bourbon County sign coming in there, you got Dr. York Bank, and maybe a couple of other things. So, yeah, I think we could have. you got Dr. York Bank and maybe a couple of other things, so yeah, I think we could hopefully adapt for that. But that would just be something I'd wanna bring to the board, not just, cause that's, that's not directly school. If we're talking about sponsored by, that's a different, different thing too. That's good. Like I said, we'll work through, but I think if we start with the hard, hard line, if you will, of gotta be school-related, then we can, we can work from there, as opposed to open it wide open.
Yeah, cause I, I'll hold back for a minute, we talked about it, cause we project that we're a community school, and I thought, well, what about the art walk that they do twice a year, or, um...
If we've got kids participating, I think we could put that...
Yeah, stuff like that, or the Christmas parade, that's kind of, well, we know our kids be in the Christmas parade, promoting things that our kids would be involved in, but also it's like promoting the community too, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Cool. Uh, next is K S V A presentation, so as you guys know, we're doing, uh, one on the recallable nickel there, and I hope you guys can, some be a part of. Like I said, I think the people that are there will want to ask you guys as many questions as they might have to make, so, uh, we're putting together a slide presentation that kinda walks through how, how we got to this and what we did strategically, and then it kinda walks through our slideshow just briefly, just, you know, follow the need, and then hopefully it's an hour and fifteen minutes. Uh, I think our presentation probably be in the thirty minute range, and then give time for questions, but I think people will just have a lot of questions. Um, so... Excuse me.
Also, we gave you the big words.
Yeah, that, I mean, that was a great session. We got so much, you and Ricky and Luke, we were all there, and there was so much good information from that. I think people wanna, wanna hear what we guys say.
Yes, I know.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like you, I'd tell, I'd say, I know it's Angie now presenting, but I'm sure if you wanna come up there with us, you're, you're welcome to, and, and, uh, it's, it should be good information. And then I'm also presenting at another session with, with Jag, so I have to... What's that?
I saw it before.
Oh, cool, alright, so, uh, but pretty, pretty good stuff to just, you know, get the pairs out there, uh, get some, get some things done.
Okay.
Uh, facilities update, so I wanna share, uh, we put out for architect bids in the paper this past, for this past week?
Last week.
Yeah.
Yes.
Week before, and, uh, we, what I wanna get your thoughts on, Sherman Carter's done some work with us already and started working on, and we have to officially hire a contractor, an architect to move forward with this, uh, this project and some of the other projects. Uh, I voiced my frustration with them earlier, I voiced it to them, and what I voiced to you all. Uh, they've since been very responsive. Uh, so, what we're looking at here is, we, we're, we're accepting bids until the twenty first from, from architects, and, and we've, uh, what, what I would like to know from you all informally is, do you want me to seek out some other architects and try to get some bids, or pick the one from there? And, and, cause I, the only drawback to that is I think we'll have a little bit of a starting over process. I don't think it's a huge starting over process if we do transition, but, uh, we've got people working already.
Let's put it this way, in my experience, we were, we were doing ninety-five percent documents for Scott County Middle School, was, oh, Scott County High School?
Right.
Which became Red Crossing, and they tracked it, had ninety-five percent documents.
Oh, wow.
And started all the way over.
Oh, wow.
So, anytime, it can happen.
Right.
You know, for me, if we got real good actual bids from four or five, and really looked at them and really did a good interview, we'll get the best, we'll get the best architect, and be able to get the biggest bang for our money.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. Like I said, it's out there publicly now, but I, like I said, I can specifically target some that have already reached out to, and we can, we can take this and revisit it next month. Uh, I, the only, the only drawback to that is just it, it might slow down a little bit of our, uh, just because of...
Starting off.
Basically starting over here. Not that we're deep into the process, but, uh, that, it may probably, if we're gonna really go that route, then we need to try out a special call meeting in a couple of weeks after these come in to just sit down and, and review those, so, you know, I'll, you tell me, I'm happy to...
Well, I think, uh, the bid process might be healthy, just for the mere fact that we might have some competition in there. They might get some, some really good benefit off of that.
Okay.
And they might have some creative, what?
What?
They might have some creative, uh, ideas for, like, for cost saving.
Yeah.
Things like that.
Okay.
I agree with Louie, because I, I think, you know, you kind of stay with the, I don't want the architects that we have thinking that we're a sure thing. So, I'm saying, and they just say, well, okay, this, this is what, this is what it is.
I mean, we had that.
Yeah.
I said something to the parent.
We had that before, but, yeah, I felt like they just kept on sticking.
Right.
Every time, so...
Okay, and so I, I've already had a conversation with some architects, and I'll just make sure they're aware that there should have been a little bit of it, but we put it out there on a fairly short timeline, but it's, I think it's the twenty, twenty-first is when it's...
Oh, February?
Yeah, so, alright, I can do that.
Uh, do you wanna extend it past that to make sure it catches wind at the K S V A, or...
Whatever we all wanna do.
I'm just saying, there's, it's out there, and we're there.
I mean, we, could we extend it to, like, the sixth or something like that, first week?
We can, and I'm all good with that. The only, the only thing I would say, this opens up the potential for, I don't know if this will be a fact, but for maybe not opening school, that school the next fall, is when we start, we start pushing back...
Fall of twenty-three?
Yeah, it starts, you know, I don't know how all this will roll out. I just know that, you know, we're, we're on a fairly tight schedule to, to say confidently, we can do fall of twenty-three. Uh, that would be my only, you know, potential reservation. Now, we can say, we're gonna push it back another week, run another head in the paper next week, and then come have a meeting right after K S V A and see what we get, you know, I don't think that would be a huge...
When did, when did they go out and do the first one?
It were in last week's paper, right?
Yes, it's running this Thursday and also last Thursday.
Yeah, it ran last Thursday, and it ran this Thursday, and it's on...
So, like, eleven and...
But it's, it's out there.
Yeah, it's on the website.
The announcement's out there, but we're looking for bids.
Is it on, is it on K, is it on K V U?
I, I think it's just on our website. Like I said, the initial spot was just to, if we're, if we're going on with this and we're kinda going through the process, but if you all really wanna push it out there...
Alright, so you put the bid out there last week in the paper, correct?
Yeah.
So, it's, it's available for anybody to look at, right?
Yes.
So, have we had any responses other than...
We've had one.
Just the one?
Yeah. I don't anticipate us getting any unless you all tell me you want me to call for lunch and get something. And I, I can do that.
I just think, I just think we have a variety, uh, variety of them. We have a better understanding of what they understand about the scope.
I mean, is, is two weeks really gonna make that?
I, I don't know. I don't know that. I, I don't, and I don't really think it's two weeks. I think it's more of just transitioning from one to the other, the act of doing that when we've, we've already got some level of renderings and some psych evaluation, and, but, I mean, we, it, I, I understand the argument the other way. I just, if it gets tight, that would be the only thing I would be worried about, potentially fall of twenty-three. And it may not even be an issue, but if we, if this pushes us back another month or so, by the time we get someone here and doing the work, uh, but I'm, I'm good to put it out there. And maybe we still go with it. Like I said, I can call the people that I've already spoken with about when I was frustrated, and can get, uh, get, I know I can get probably two or three bids in by, by next week, to reach on that line.
We'll just do that.
And then we can, yeah.
Where, it says that, uh, are we, what are we, what are we asking for? Is it R S T or R F, uh, B?
It's a letter for, I have, I have to call up the Verbridge.
Other qualifications?
Yeah, I'll get it pulled up.
I think if you get like two or three bids for the school board meeting, then you often kinda scope out those respective architects, and get failed, or, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so they're basically, it's just a letter of interest, uh, from, we're seeking a letter of interest from the, uh, companies that have been out for, for bids.
So, right now, Sher- Sherman Carter's the only one who has sent you a letter of interest?
Yes.
And with respect to, like, renderings and stuff like that, I think we need to also think about what it's gonna look like. It's gonna be on Main Street. We want it to stand out, because if it looks like every other middle school or elementary school in town, we're not gonna stand out. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, so basically, I'll, what we're in the paper is the Paris Independent Board of Education is soliciting one-page letters of interest from qualified architectural firms for design services for Paris preschool center and renovations across the district, so that's what went out. Like I said, I, it won't be any problem for me to get three or four other firms to bring that in, and then we can decide next steps from there.
I think we should do some more.
Renderings you sent me, was that from Sherman Carter?
Yeah, I, I will, uh, I'll reach out.
Yeah.
Go ahead. Um, and then, as far as the renderings, we had that one show there, but we'll, we'll sit on this until we get some other people in, and, and there may be some that wanna go ahead and send some ideas if they had, and just might give us more to, to play with and see what catches their eye, so...
Okay.
Uh, I'm good with that. Um, next, House School five sixty-three, uh, I met with, uh, about ten superintendents that are from independent districts in Barks Town last week, uh, some very good conversations about, you know, what, what this might look like as far as with the open borders. Uh, very, people on all different ends of, of, of where it might be, uh, but I think getting, you know, I think one of the guys there said, said it very nicely, you know, we wanna grow, we wanna be innovative, we wanna get more, attract more kids, we also wanna be good neighbors, uh, to our other districts. And I think, uh, finding that balance is, is what we're gonna continue to do, and we will be pushing out in the next three to four weeks, our enrollment for next, for next year, uh, so it'll be on the marquee, um, so we're really trying to grow at that preschool, kindergarten, elementary, and it'll just, you know, start having sixty, seventy, eighty, eighty kids in the class, and, you know, heat filtering up. Uh, but we're, we're gonna continue to market the schools and try to grow, uh, but like I said, we're not trying to put anybody else out of business. We're just trying to, to draw and attract kids here and provide the best opportunity we can. And, and the beautiful thing about what we've done with all the investment we've made is if we can grow another ten percent, that, the funding that we get from that, our overhead won't go up much more. It won't be its own more staff, it won't be more electric or heating and cooling, uh, but we'll be able to provide additional pathways and additional supports for, for kids and families and, and you need the experiences. So, uh, I was very optimistic after coming out of that meeting and excited about where we might go and getting some other ideas from other, other districts about how they're marketing and, and sharing, uh, how, what they're, how they plan to deal with it. So, I haven't had, you know, direct communication, uh, with, with county schools around here about it, you know, just kinda been indirect, uh, and people are still waiting to see if legislature's gonna do anything else to it. It looks like they're not, so, uh, I think there was some thought that they are. I think there's still gonna be those educational opportunity counts that, that allow my, allow tax credits to go to private schools, which is something that we, we proposed, and I think we should continue to propose, but it sounds like this is just gonna continue to go through as a...
Did that lawsuit, is this still going on?
Yeah, I mean, it got, the, the judge struck it that part down, but now it's being appealed, and it's, it's just a mess. But there, there's, there's a movement in Frankfurt to try to get more funds diverted away, uh, to, from tax dollars away to, to private schools. That's, that's not going where vouchers or whatever you wanna call it, that continues to be there. Uh, COVID nineteen update, the numbers continue to drop dramatically. I talked with Andrea Brown, Andrea Bynum in the Health Department today. Uh, there's some districts that are looking at going to mask optional uh, in the next, in the coming weeks. Uh, I think, I'm hopeful that we'll be in the same boat there. Uh, we're gonna continue to consult with her and make sure we do that in a safe manner, but, um, it's, that, that movement's coming. And the legislature even passed a bill, a committee today that was gonna make mask mandates unlawful, so if that gets passed, then we wouldn't have any choice about that. But right now, you know, we're, we're not getting a lot of calls about it, uh, but if we do, I'll, I'll let you know, and, you know, we're gonna continue to do it safe, but I think as more schools announce that, that'll be kind of the, uh, the run rate out there.
I know Scott County is going mask optional March first.
Yeah, I saw that just, just a little bit ago. Uh, so, we'll, we'll, we'll keep, keep that in the... There's a chance of making some announcement similar to that, of a, of a target date out there, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. And then finally, I wanted to put on your radar, I don't think we have to set this today, but the, uh, graduation date and speaker. Uh, our last day with kids is the twenty-seventh, which is a Friday. Uh, I hope that's, can stay the same, you know, regarding weather and anything like that. Uh, that would, as it stands right now, I talked to Amy Baker, that's their graduation night, that, that Friday. Their, their last day is that Monday. It's all part of their policy. It's the last Friday after the flash day school. So, um, I don't think it's great to have them the same night as theirs, uh, so we can, just something to be thinking about, uh...
It's more of a late weekend again.
And that is more of a late weekend, so you're talking about, you know, I mean, it's something we can look at on Thursday. Uh, we could, we, we just have to, we'll, I'll brainstorm some ideas, but I just wanna put that on everybody's radar.
I'd rather do it before the weekend, cause nobody, I mean, I'm...
Yeah.
So...
It might be we do it Thursday. We could potentially do a Thursday graduation and, and finish up school on Friday.
Hmm.
And then, uh, I'm gonna put Mr. Matthews on the spot, uh, but we had, talking about a speaker, and this is, we're still a little ways out, but we had talked last year about getting some students a little bit more plugged in with that graduation experience, so, I know we've talked, we've had speakers in the past and, and could still continue to do that, but, uh, talking about really getting a student-led, uh, that experience, so, uh, if you have speakers in mind, let me know. We can talk through that, uh, but we can also look at potentially doing a, a full student-led ceremony, cause they don't wanna listen to me or Mr. Matthews talk, cause it's, I'd rather hear their peers' problems.
That's what, uh, they did at Dylan's graduation at Bourbon last year.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. The kids did the whole thing.
Yeah.
The senior clients did.
It's tough, like there's some nostalgia with bringing back an alumni or something, you know, I, I like that, that aspect of it, but, you know, there's also, I like the idea of getting our kids being, being head lures, that's what it's all about. So, we'll talk more about that. I just wanna put that on your radar. That's all I've got.
Okay, thank you, sir. Louie, you got anything?
I appreciate the, uh, the picture and pictures. Thank you, and thank you for the, uh, the location. Appreciate that, and, uh, thanks for all the, uh, recognition to kind of, I think they were really good.
There's just, there's a lot, it's, it's starting to feel more normal and more, it's just fun stuff happening right now, and that's, it's been, it feels like it's been two years since that's been the case.
Ricky?
Just wanna thank you all.
We wish you good luck this coming week.
Thank you.
In our thoughts and prayers, buddy.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Janice?
I absolutely love that banner. I am blown away with that banner and how that ended up at the very mouth of Peter's way. That's amazing. Um, I'm just thankful to be here, and I'm thankful for all the staff, uh, for all that everybody has been with you, just for our students. Thank you.
Uh, first? Just thanks for the appreciation from the students and the staff, and then the hard work that students and the staff have given me, like this really, a really good year, and, and, just, thanks for making our job a little easier and asking for this stuff.
Really. Um, love the presentation from the kids tonight. I, I really appreciate that, and loved all the posts with our little elementary academic team this weekend, um, how well they did. Um, you're just talking about the little ones when they achieve great things. It just makes you feel so good, and, uh, that was awesome. I really appreciate that. I love the signs. I go up and down Main Street now to the circus cause I like seeing the school sign lit up when I go to work every morning. Um... I'm just really proud...
I'm just really proud of, um, our school, and I'm proud of our board, and our principals, and teachers, and our superintendent, because, uh, we know that there's some days that aren't always real easy, and we know that there's some days that you probably think, what have I got myself into? But that's all a part of it, and I, I just want you all to know that I, I really appreciate the way that you handle things, and, um, and I look forward to moving forward and, and seeing great things happen with our school, and that's all I've got. Anything? Alright, and with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Janice?
Bye.
All in favor, say aye.
Y'all did a picture with the, the.